The Royal Commission into violence, abuse, neglect and exploitation of people with disability is now in session.
Good morning. We welcome everyone who was attending attending this public hearing in the Royal Commission's Brisbane Hearing Room, as well as those following the proceedings over the live stream. This is day two of public hearing thirty three of the Royal Commission. I will now invite Commissioner Mason to do the acknowledgement of country.
Thank you, Chair. We acknowledge me in Brisbane. We recognise the country, north and south of the Brisbane River, as the home of both Turrbal and Jaggery nations. We acknowledge the Turrbal and Jaggery nations as the traditional owners and custodians of the lands upon which this Royal Commission is sitting. We acknowledge and pay our deep respect to elders, past and present, and we acknowledge First Nations young people who one day will take their place as elders. We extend that respect to all First Nations people and acknowledge their enduring connection to land, sky, seas and waterways. We pay our deep respect to First Nations people here today and who are following this public hearing online, on the mainland and on islands, including Tasmania and in the Torres Strait, especially elders, parents and young people with disability. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Mason. Before I hand over to counsel assisting with Gillian Mahoney, I would like to remind those viewing this hearing that there are non-publication and pseudonym directions which apply to certain evidence. The two young men who are the focus of this hearing are referred to by pseudonym Caleb and Jonathan. The Royal Commission has made direction prohibiting the publication of their names and identifying information in relation to this hearing. Miss Mahoney.
Thank you, Chair. Good morning, Chair and Commissioners, and good morning to all the people present in these CRC rooms in Brisbane and those present watching the live stream. Chair and Commissioners, this morning we have two witnesses or three witnesses. The first witness is Mr Luke Twyford, the Principal Commissioner of Queensland Family and Child Commission. And then our next witnesses are Dr Sam Bennett and Desmond Lee of the National Disability Insurance Agency. Your honour, the first witness that I call is Mr Luke Twyford, and he will give an affirmation.
Thank you, Miss Mahoney. Commissioner Twyford, thank you very much for coming to the Royal Commission and for your forthcoming evidence, as well as for the material that you have provided us. We're grateful for your assistance with our inquiry. I'm Commissioner McEwan, this is Commissioner Mason, Commissioner Ryan. I will ask the associate to administer the affirmation. Thank you.
I will read you the affirmation. At the end, please say yes or I do. Do solemnly and sincerely declare and affirm that the evidence which you shall give will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Yes, I do.
Miss Mahoney.
Your name is Luke Twyford, spelt T Y, sorry, T W Y F O R D.
That is correct.
And you're the Principal Commissioner of the Queensland Family and Child Commission?
Yes.
And also the Chair of the Child Death Review Board?
Yes.
You've prepared a statement dated the third of May two thousand and twenty-three for the purposes of this hearing?
Yes, I have.
And that was done pursuant to a notice issued by the Royal Commission?
Yes.
Have you had an opportunity to read your statement recently?
Yes, I have.
And do you say that it's true and correct?
Yes, I do.
You're appointed to your role on the twenty-fifth of December two thousand and twenty-one?
That is correct.
And that is a three-year appointment?
Yes.
In terms of the timeframe of your appointment, so you commenced after the death of Paul Barrett in that role?
Yes, I did.
And you commenced in that role after the Commission had prepared certain reports that we will come to that looked into the circumstances of both Caleb and Jonathan?
That is correct.
So is it the case that you took over from the Principal Commissioner who was involved in the review of Caleb and Jonathan and the preparation of those reports?
Yes.
In terms of the functions of both the Commission and also the Principal Commissioner, there's, you're one of two Commissioners?
That's correct.
And as the Principal Commissioner, some of your functions include specifically controlling the Commission?
Correct.
Keeping the child death register?
Yes.
And also you've been appointed as the Chair of the Child Death Review Board?
That's correct. That's a separate appointment, but it's for one of the two Commissioners of the Queensland Family and Child Commission.
And you're currently appointed as well as being the Principal Commissioner, but the other Commissioner can also be appointed to that role in circumstances?
Could be. One of the two have to be appointed.
Section nine one of the Act, and the Act that I'm referring to is the Family and Child Commission Act two thousand and fourteen Queensland, that's the Act that sets up the Family and Child Commission?
That's correct.
And your role. And when we go to that Act, subsection nine one, subsection A, talks about providing oversight of child protection system. Is that correct?
That's correct.
As well as having to promote and advocate for the safety and wellbeing of children and young people?
Yes.
Especially children that are in need of protection or in the youth justice system?
Correct.
One of your other functions at subsection I is to analyse and evaluate at a systemic level policies and practices relevant to the child protection system and the performance of relevant agencies in delivering services?
That's correct.
Can you, bearing in mind those particular functions, and they're only a snippet of the work that you do as Commissioner and within the Commission, can you describe what your overarching role is?
So the overarching role of the Queensland Family and Child Commission and myself as the Principal Commissioner is to provide advice to government based on analysis, oversight, review, surveys and other work on the current performance of Queensland's child protection system?
Can I just ask you just to slow down a little bit? Just in terms of things being recorded, and we also have interpreters today as well, including live stream. Thank you.
So to analyse and conduct reviews into the performance of the child protection system, including the provision of advice to both the Minister and government, as well as departmental leaders on possible and actual improvements required for the safety of children and families.
So in that regard, if we were to generally characterise it, you have an overarching role of identifying systemic issues?
That's correct.
And addressing systemic issues?
That's correct. And the Act is deliberately broad in its long list of functions, given that it is a role that's meant to work across portfolios and traditional government, work across traditional government silos to provide holistic advice on how to make improvements to the safety and wellbeing of Queensland's children and families.
And when you talk about the traditional silos, are you talking about how some government agencies may work within their own sphere? They're a silo and they may not necessarily cross over and engage with other agencies?
That is correct.
So part of your role is to try and look at systemic issues by breaching those silos?
Correct.
Can you just explain to the Chair and the Commissioners how the Commission determines what it will address?
So there is a whole range of mechanisms that we employ, but within the Act, it is as a statutory independent authority upon myself and the other Commissioner and our workforce to identify areas where we believe there are opportunities for improvement to the system. And in order to do that, we draw on the views of departmental frontline workers, people in the sector, the lived experiences of the people we engage with, as well as a wealth of data that government collects and produces. So we have a role in synthesising the data and performance reports that departments will publish, and we conduct community surveys and frontline worker surveys. But it is, in summary, a self-generated process of identifying where we can make a difference and then determining what work to do. There's a couple of just...
If I can just stop you there at that point. Just so in terms of the self-generated work, it is always referable back to section nine, is it?
Absolutely. That's correct.
If I can just draw your attention to section, subsection nine two, which provides that it is not a function of the Commission to investigate the circumstances of a particular child, young person or family, or to advocate on their behalf. Do you see that provision as a limitation on your role?
It's a limitation on some of the ways in which we would choose to do our work, but it is re-emphasising that the Commission is there for systemic findings and systemic learnings. So it provides us with the ability to step above being drawn into individual cases and to look at the compilation of issues across Queensland and provide advice strategically, as I said, across multiple portfolios and funding streams. But in doing that work, obviously, we do need to understand the individual cases that are part of the system.
Isn't it fair to say that an individual circumstance may squarely identify and flag significant or at least even important systemic issue or issues?
Yes.
And without being able to look potentially at an individual, you may be missing opportunities to perform your role by looking at systemic matters. Is that a fair statement?
I think that's a fair statement. There's nuance in the reason why we would look into individual circumstances, and when we bring it back to section nine, we're looking, I would suggest, we're looking into individual cases to make system findings and system learnings distinct from individual advocacy in that case.
So looking to the example of Caleb and Jonathan, that exercise that you undertook as part of your powers in section nine, that came from a direction from your Minister, which is the Attorney General, is that correct?
That is correct.
So that direction is by reference to section twenty-two of your Act?
Correct.
Could you have conducted the review into the specific circumstances of Caleb and Jonathan without that direction?
No, we would not be able to specifically look at an individual case and produce a report on an individual or two individual circumstances under section nine or part two of the Act.
And by reference to what at least this Disability Royal Commission is looking at as part of this hearing, and by reference to what your own inquiries found, had you not had that direction and had you not had the capacity to self-drive that particular review, would that not have been a very great missed opportunity?
Yes, it would have, absolutely. There are a couple of exceptions I wanted to raise in our Act where we do have the power to look into individual circumstances, and that's in the Child Death Register, so the ability to collect information to ensure that the Child Death Register is accurate. And the second is the Child Death Review Board, which is specifically designed to look into individual cases.
But both of those are looking at circumstances where a child has passed?
That's correct.
So it's looking at, reflecting about what could have happened to stop a death as opposed to looking at what is currently happening to stop a future death?
That's correct.
Doesn't the importance or the example of the review you undertook in respect of Caleb and Jonathan drive home the need to have at least some greater flexibility in terms of whether you can look at individual cases to the extent that they have the potential to drive into systemic matters?
Yes.
In terms of how you decide the focus of your work, you've spoken about working with other agencies and breaking down silos. Are there formal or informal reporting processes in place that allow that to happen?
They would be mostly informal. We are establishing formal mechanisms, particularly with Officer Public Guardian and the Ombudsman, but I would not call them formalised yet to the point where there is a published memorandum of understanding or procedures. We do have an advisory group, council and group, and have regular meetings with those other statutory officers, but I would not class it as formal.
You've just mentioned memorandums of understanding. Is there some work in progress to try and shore up such arrangements to assist in the sharing of appropriate information?
Yes, there is.
And can I ask, how far are you into that process? And also, is there your Act sufficiently robust to allow those kind of processes to be completed?
They're at the drafting stage. They're not yet at the sharing of drafts between the Ombudsman in particular and the Officer Public Guardian, but conversations have occurred where there is agreement on the nature of information that needs to be swapped. To address the second part of your question, there is still the limitation on the Commission for being able to access confidential information. So where, for example, the Ombudsman or Officer Public Guardian and the Human Rights Commission are dealing with individual complainants and complaints. And in my role, I would want to understand the thematic issues or the risks that are arising in those complaints. I'm looking for a strategic advice to me on where to focus the Commission's attention, but I am limited in being able to access the individual complaints that are giving rise to those strategic systemic issues.
And that is because of, is it section thirty-five under your Act that states you cannot require confidential information?
Correct.
How does, what does that mean in practice? What information can you not access as part of the performance of your work?
So section thirty-five enables me to request information from departments in relation to my functions, and it compels a person served with a notice to produce information in alignment with my instrument. But the subset clause to that section is that it does not apply to confidential information, which would be relevant case material for any individual receiving a child protection service or a disability service or an education service.
So for example, in respect of Caleb and Jonathan, would have you been, I withdraw that, could you or did you receive information from child services about work that they had done with child services that contained personal information about them?
Sorry, is that question specific to the case or conceptual? So we did not request, formally request confidential information from the department because of that clause, but also because of the way our terms of reference for that review were designed that acknowledged we could not access or request confidential information.
So does that suggest, then also your answer suggests that in practice you would not go down the path of requesting confidential information because of the limitations of section thirty-five?
I would say that is correct. There are times when we do request access to case files for our reviews and are at times granted access when it is, in the views of the appropriate Director General, agreeable to do so. But as a general rule, the line between sensitive case files and our ability to access them is pretty clear.
Does the same limitation apply to the Child Death Review Board?
No, it does not.
Do you want, so there's, you in your role as Principal Commissioner cannot request confidential information, correct?
Correct.
But as the Chair of the Child Death Review Board, you can request confidential information?
I can request it and I must receive it, yes.
Can I just ask a clarifying question? We're referring to something called confidential information, and I'm a little bit unclear as to what that includes and excludes, but I might take it then you're asked to inquire into the circumstances of the two boys. So are you largely limited to only what's available in the media then about that matter?
It's a good question. The word confidential is not defined in our Act. But it goes to the case files, the client files, in our operation of how it's been operationalised, goes to the case files and client files of those boys. Our initial requests or the policies, procedures and internal departmental files relevant to generically how they would approach the situation that they were faced with, and that aligned with terms of reference one in our review.
But in regard to information about the circumstances of the two boys as they were found on the death of their father, would you have been basically limited to what was available in the media? What outside that would you have got information to?
Some information that was related from Director Generals and departments such as the NDIA relating to, did they have contact? Confirmation that they had contact with that child, for example, so it is not accessing the documents and files within the department, but rather seeking the department's response to the issues presented.
So in terms of really critical stuff like, were reports made to that department? For example, there were reports that neighbours and other people had made reports to the department. You would have had no information about how or when they were made. Would you have had a report on the circumstances in which the young men were found?
No.
Almost nothing.
Thank you. And in fact, when you did prepare a report, the first report prepared was titled Terms of Reference One, a report following the alleged neglect of two young people with a disability. And at page two of that report, you specifically, or the writer specifically references there being incomplete information.
That's correct.
So is it the case that the Commission, when acting within the Commission and not within the Child Death Review Board, always has that limitation?
Yes.
So that means that the Commission is never fully receiving potentially the full story?
On individual cases, that is correct.
Do you see that as a hindrance to the role when looking at the systemic issues that are driving the individual cases?
Yes, I do. And we've produced a paper to review of our legislation calling for that limitation on confidential information to be looked at, because in order to understand systemic issues, we do need further information on individual cases.
And certainly, if you need some more, just please help yourself. Certainly, the Commission would not be adverse to appropriate amendments to address the non-disclosure of confidential information received in the course of your role, correct?
Correct.
And such similar provisions already operate with the Child Death Review Board?
That's correct. Section thirty-six of our Act provides protections for confidential information that my officers do receive as a protection that's already there.
And the prohibition that applies to the Child Death Review Board, does that power work effectively as you've seen it?
Yes, it does.
And there's no reason why the same type of capacity to request confidential information with the same limit on non-disclosure could not apply to the Commission, correct?
That's correct.
One of the things that you said just earlier in your work was that it's a statutory independent role?
Yes.
It is, however, under section twenty-two of the Act, subject to the direction of the Minister?
Yes.
And the Minister is the Attorney General, correct?
That's correct.
The Attorney General of Queensland?
Correct.
How does that statutory direction operate in practice?
So in practice, I've not experienced ministerial direction in the time that I've been in the role, but prior to my arrival, that section was used to require the Commission to conduct reviews into individual cases. So a Minister would write to the Principal Commissioner, much as like in this case, requesting that the Commissioner undertake a review into an individual circumstance and to require a report generally to provide it back to that Minister.
Does the does the section twenty-two direction also relate to the more administrative aspects of your role?
I believe it could, particularly my function to control the Commission. As a CEO of an entity that receives government money, I think it is important in relation to workplace health safety laws and other requirements that it would be a section of our Act enabling a Minister of Government to provide direction.
Is it possible, you've said that you've not had the experience of being subject to a direction, but it is possible though that you could, as part of your role as Principal Commissioner, determine to do a review of a matter relevant to a systemic matter? Could that review be shut down by a direction of the Minister, in theory at least?
In theory, I believe it could.
But to your knowledge, that's never occurred?
No.
What do you see the importance or relevance of not having such a, well, I'll go back a step first. Do you consider it is important in your functions, the section nine functions where you're looking at systemic matters, for example, not to be subject to ministerial direction other than to supplement the work that you can do?
Yes. There's two parts to that question. I think I have two views I'd like to express. One is that it is absolutely important for the Queensland Family and Child Commissioners to be able to identify risk and explore those risks to children and families and to produce evidence in relation to those systemic risks free of interference. But the second is that there is benefit to a government being able to identify an issue that it would like the Commission to look into and to signal that it has a concern as a government or it has an unknown question that there is no answer to, and to signal that they would like the Commission's resources to be applied to that issue in order to produce advice that they could act on. So I think if the direction is to request work, I think that is a positive, but I don't think it should, and I don't think it has limited the Commission's own ability to identify where it needs to focus attention.
But importantly, it shouldn't be able to limit what you can do, correct?
Correct.
In terms of the being subject to a direction of the Minister, the Child Death Review Board is not subject to direction of the Minister, correct?
That's correct.
That's section twenty-nine, capital F, subsection two, subsection B?
Correct.
So again, there's an inconsistency in a way in the Act that one aspect of your work is subject to ministerial direction, but the systemic ones outside of child deaths is not, is subject to ministerial direction?
That is correct.
So what are, from your view, the benefits to being able to have a function that allows you to act both independently and impartially in terms of outcomes and your role?
So because the function of the Commission and my functions and powers relate to systemic issues and providing advice across multiple portfolio areas, it's very important that we aren't drawn into the individual needs, wants or desires of any portfolio Minister or area of government at the exclusion of the others. So the ability to be driven by the evidence and driven by our analysis and what the sector and frontline workers are telling us needs to be fixed empowers us to focus on evidence-based reviews and evidence-based determination and identification of where we want to focus attention. The way in which we then present our findings and our advice is very much about choosing whether it is for public consumption, i.e. we need to increase community awareness, or whether it's for departmental action, so providing advice to Director Generals in singular or plural so that collective action can be taken within the bureaucracy, or whether it's advice to government and Parliament. Or whether it's advice to government and parliament, because we need a a consistent legislative reform or funding.
Turning to the report that you, the review that you did into the circumstances of Caleb and Jonathan. So that was done at the direction of the minister under section twenty two.
Correct.
There was terms of reference that were created by your predecessor, the former, uh, principal commissioner. That was approved by the attorney general.
Yes.
So that was also a section twenty two direction in practice?
Yes.
And your power to investigate, which, uh, has been slightly explored already. Uh, involved you making requests for information but not being confidential information.
That's correct.
Uh, and you've included in your statement a number of letters, uh, at annexes E to I being. The correspondence to the various agencies that you suspected may be able to assist you in your inquiries.
That's correct.
I I think, uh, we've probably explored the limitation on the information. Is there anything, though, that you wanted to add about, uh, what it means in practice for your work? In the limitation under section thirty five of the act?
Uh, I think we've covered that ground.
In terms of the Child Death Review Board now. Uh, there was a suggestion originally that the Child Death Review Board, and this is, I I withdraw that. The terms of reference set out what the Child Death Review Board would consider, correct?
That's correct.
And, uh, commissioners, this is at annexure D, uh, of the statement. On page one and page two. The Child Death, uh, Review Board was to establish, uh, the system contact points with the family. In the years prior to the young brother's discovery, uh, to examine the effectiveness and appropriateness of responses. Uh, and that was to include mapping the interga- uh, interactions of agencies involved with the family. During periods of heightened vulnerability. Uh, and the Child Death Review Board was to en- identify gaps and opportunities. For system improvements to legislation, policies and practice. And recommend changes to strengthen the child protection system and to promote the safety and wellbeing of children. Pretty important matters to consider in the circumstances?
A- absolutely.
At the time the terms of reference were drafted, the Child Death Review Board was being contemplated. In legislation, but that legislation had not yet commenced, is that correct?
That's correct.
Uh, it contemplated it would commence on one July two thousand and twenty?
Correct.
And it did commence on that date?
Yes, it did.
Now, is this correct? Ordinarily, the Child Death Review Board could not consider the circumstances. Of Caleb and Jonathan because it did not relate to their deaths. Uh, and the death of the father did not fall within their terms of reference.
That's correct. There's a very clear legislative trigger for what will come to the Child Death Review Board. And it is a child that has passed away, lost a child. Who was known to the child protection system within the twelve months prior to the date of death.
Uh, when the Child Death Review Board was set up, uh, it included though a provision similar to. The section twenty two provision that allowed the commission to undertake a review. But it allowed a provision for the board to carry out a review in exceptional circumstances.
Correct.
Where the minister, the attorney general, makes a request.
That's correct.
So for the Child Death Review Board to perform the terms of reference. It required upon its commencement, a referral or a direction from the minister to do so because it fell outside of its terms.
That's correct.
In July two thousand and twenty, there was a brief provided by the attorney general. Uh, uh, to the attorney general by the commission.
Yes.
And, uh, chair and commissioners, that's at an- annexure R. And at that point, so July two thousand and twenty, it was still intended. That, uh, the Child Death Review Board would undertake the work. The subject that we've just explained, uh, at points two and three of the terms of reference.
That's correct.
A briefing took place on the twentieth of August, and this is at annexure, uh, T. Between the commission and the attorney general. That's referred to in a letter from the attorney general to the commission. There's been nothing produced in respect of that meeting though, uh, by the commission. You agree with that?
Agree.
Uh, have you looked for material that would fall in to what occurred on that date?
Yes, we have.
And did you find anything?
We we found no documents other than what we've provided, uh, attached to my statement.
So, so given that you were not in the role at that time, you're not aware of what happened at that briefing?
No, I do not know.
So we know though, from the second of October two thousand and twenty. The attorney general informs your predecessor that. Uh, it is not intended to refer this matter to the Child Death Review Board, correct?
That's correct.
So the effect of that was that important work was simply carved out and not proceeded with?
That the work to review the individual circumstances, um, did not occur.
Uh, to your knowledge, has such a review been undertaken since that date? Outside of this Royal Commission at least?
No, a- and I think the referral of this case to the Royal Commission occurred pretty soon after that time.
It, the absence of an investigation at a state level. Notwithstanding there being a layer of a Royal Commission occurring, is that not a deficit? In, for Queensland in identifying potential systemic issues. At an early stage to prevent something like this occurring into the future?
I th- I think that's a. I I would answer yes. We need to understand how these children and father came to be in this situation. And we need to put in place preventative mechanisms and improve systems to ensure. It is not currently occurring in other families and that it won't occur again. The Child Death Review Board, um, uh, uh, when it did commence, um, has looked into cases. Uh, related to vulnerable families' access to the N D I S and has made a recommendation about that matter. So systemically, there is a tension being given to the issue, but it's occurring without. The detailed knowledge of what's actually occurred to individual children in cases such as this. So whilst we're making systemic findings, uh, we don't have the case-specific. Um, detailed content, um, such as that being, uh, bore out in this hearing.
A- and section thirty five of your act means that you won't get that detail?
Not from the Queensland Family and Child Commission.
Uh, have you received any information from any agencies that they elected not to undertake their own? Uh, review of the circumstances of Caleb and Jonathan because. They understood that the Child Death Review Board would be undertaking a review?
Um, I don't have specific knowledge of that content, uh.
I- i- if such a, to to the extent that position was being taken. Uh, would you consider that is an appropriate position for an agency to to take?
I object to that. That's not a proper question for this witness with respect.
Uh, Your Honour, uh, Chair, in my submission, it is a proper question. Uh, the witness is able to comment on, uh, systemic issues. His evidence is about. Parties, uh, and agencies operating in silos and part of his role is to be able to breach those silos. Uh, the absence of an individual review, uh, would mean that, uh, there is a missed opportunity. Should the commission be able to, uh, undertake its own review. Uh, and knowing the position of agencies is relevant, uh, to whether or not, um. It is an appropriate response.
Well, Ms McMillan? Um, again, it's really not for this witness. That submission in any case can be made. But secondly, this would entail, no doubt, this witness having to look at other pieces of legislation. As to whether or, uh, whether they can carry out reviews. So I repeat the objection.
If the question relates to the role of this commission, then I will allow it.
Sorry, I may have, I may have lost track of the question.
Yes, and the, uh, the question was that, uh, within your role. Um, have you received any information from any agency that they elected not to undertake their own review? Uh, and to the extent that position was being taken, would you consider it is an appropriate position for an agency to take?
I I think this case has highlighted the complexity of. Reviews in terms of reference related to reviews and the powers to undertake reviews. The separation between the Queensland Family and Child Commission's review under twenty two. And the powers of the Child Death Review Board play out in the time difference and the fact that the terms of reference under twenty two. Related to a Child Death Review Board that did not yet exist in practice. Um, the Child Death Review Board practice generally. A- and in legislation is that all departments conduct an internal review. Those internal reviews are provided to the board. Uh, who employ staff to synthesise those reports and reviews, identify gaps. And system issues and missed opportunities to produce a report to the Child Death Review Board that's more holistic. Um, that that did not play out in this case because the Child Death Review Board process did not occur. I would understand why, um, people would be expecting. The Queensland Family and Child Commission and the Child Death Review Board report under these terms of reference to be. The holistic assessment of this case a- and would be looking to contribute to that review rather than doing their own. Um, that would make e- e- effective and efficient sense to me. Um, and it is incredibly unfortunate that the second part of the terms of reference did not occur.
We can just, uh, move on then to the report following your review. Uh, I've mentioned the first report was titled Term of Reference One. A report following the alleged neglect of two young people with disability. So that was a sixteen-page report with annexes. It identified, uh, Caleb and Jonathan by name.
That's correct.
Uh, a- and it examined at least at a base level their, the circumstances as they were found on that day.
Yes.
Uh, but the report expressly did rely and refer to their lived experiences, correct?
Refer to, yes, 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 it did.
A- a- and that was relevant in making, uh, findings about the systemic issues?
Correct.
So that report was provided to the attorney general on the fourteenth of January two thousand and twenty one. Are you aware whether that report was shared with any relevant ministers at all?
No, I'm not.
Uh, we, a- in, and in terms then of that report, are you aware whether it was ever, uh, publicly published?
To the best of my knowledge, it has not been publicly released or published.
And whose decision was that not to publish that document?
So that was a decision of the minister at the time.
So that's another section twenty two decision?
That's correct.
Wha- what is the, the commission's position on publishing reports of that nature? Even if one was to insert pseudonyms, uh, uh, to limit identification or stop the identification of. Of the person's name?
Yeah. Um, because this is a re- a report produced under a section twenty two request. Where that request specified that the report was to be provided to the minister. Um, it was not for the principal commissioner of the time or the commission to publish that report. When we self-generate reviews and we produce reports, we do, as a general rule, publish them. Um, and also where we do, uh, detailed reports, uh, that are not for, um, public release. Uh, it does not prevent us from, um, doing summaries, fact sheets, uh, social media. Campaigns to raise awareness or pinpoint the specific issue that we feel needs to be addressed. Uh, but when it is a section twenty two report, much like our annual reports, all three annual reports. Child Death, Queensland Family and Child Commission and Child Death Review Board and our section forty report. Um, they are provided to the minister to table in parliament and we do not publish them u- until that, um, tableing has occurred.
Now, I, the, the report was provided to the attorney general in January, fourteenth of January, twenty twenty one. And on the eighth of July, twenty twenty one, so almost four months later, your office received a call at four P M, correct?
That's correct.
Uh, and it was, uh, from the attorney general's office?
Um, I believe it was the attorney general's department, an officer in the department.
And what they were asking for was a redacted version, uh, or a. A more concise version of the report that they had received eight months ago.
A sum- a summary version.
A- and when did they want that by?
Uh, the next day.
So they'd had it for eight months and they wanted a new report, or I withdraw that, they wanted a different form of your report overnight.
A de-identified summary version, yes.
A- and your office provided that the next day?
That's correct.
Uh, and that's the report titled Summary Report, Keeping School-Aged Children with Disabilities Safe?
That's correct.
And that report has been published?
Yes.
Uh, commissioners, for your reference, the first report that, uh, was done, the terms of reference one report. That is at tab B, point two, point two, two, five. And the summary report is at tab B, point two, point two, two, nine.
Missed the date on which the request was made for the summary?
The request was made on the eighth of July, uh, and a summary report was provided the next day on the ninth of July. My apologies. Oh, the year.
Yes.
Uh, sorry, twenty twenty, twenty twenty, my apologies. So, um, eighth July twenty twenty. And nine July twenty twenty, my apologies for that. Turning to the summary report, so that was a de-identified report.
That's correct.
Uh, so it made no reference to, uh, Caleb or Jonathan?
No, it did not.
Uh, and it provided no examples of their lived experiences?
No.
It, are you able to say why pseudonyms were simply not a- a- applied?
Um, I was not present at that time, but there are multiple other reports and instances where very similar. Um, summaries of more detailed reports were produced. And it is my belief that it hinges on the role of the commission not to inquire into the specific circumstances of individuals. And that therefore our public reports are reframed to be s- system-focused reports.
So it's driving back to subsection two of section nine?
That's correct.
Do you agree though that in terms of having a document that actually presents a lived experience? It can assist agencies to better understand how systemic problems arise and why they need to be addressed?
Absolutely.
If I can just ask you some questions about the approach of the commission. Uh, does it see itself as a human rights-based organisation or at least performing its task from a human rights perspective?
Yeah, yes, it does, and we have an explicit commitment as part of that to the rights of children. And the United Nations Convention on the Rights of a Child forms a very key part to how we approach our work.
A- a- and in terms of the human rights, what what are the rights that the commission specifically focuses on?
In terms of human rights?
Yeah.
W- well, it's the collective of them and more importantly from our legislative, um, functions, how our government systems. Are impacting on those rights.
Uh, and your role is also one that gives a voice to children?
Correct.
Uh, to achieve that, does the commission, well, you've given some evidence already that the commission works with other agencies. Uh, and in your statutory review of your, or a, withdraw that, in the review of your legislation. You make reference to, uh, a watchhouse review. Uh, did that review come about? From engagement with other agencies?
Yes, it certainly did. Um, so the Office of Public Guardian and the Ombudsman and Children. Uh, uh, sorry, the Human Rights Commissioner in Queensland have all been vocal, both publicly and, um. With myself and co-commissioner Natalie Lewis in relation to individual circumstances of children being detained in what? in relation to individual circumstances of children being detained in watchhouses. It was the combination of, of the multiple individual cases that led to us deeming that to be a systemic issue. And we are now inquiring into the causes and impacts on children, uh, for both why are they being detained in watchhouses for extended periods as well as the impact upon them.
And so going back to your evidence before about having memorandums of understanding because of the limitations in the Act about getting, uh, information, that need speaks to those type of circumstances?
A- a- absolutely.
Uh, looking just at the Human Rights Act, that applies to, I, I withdraw that, the Human Rights Act two thousand and nineteen of the Queensland Act.
Yes.
That applies to decisions made by the commission?
Absolutely.
Uh, and applies to you in your role of, uh, exercising your role as commissioner?
Yes.
What impact has that act had, uh, on your role since, uh, the, your, your position and, and your body came into being?
So I commenced in the role when the act was already in operation, so I was not present for the implementation to, to, to provide clear advice on what changed. But certainly in f- framing our, um, projects and providing advice, we are conducting human rights impact assessments in relation to our proposals and, and our actions. Uh, and specifically, um, we have produced and are doing child ri- uh, human, sorry, child rights impact assessments in addition to the human rights impacts assessments for our own work. Uh, but we're applying that rights-based lens to many of our projects. Uh, the most recent public one of those was Yarning for Change, where we spoke to young people in our youth detention centres in Queensland. Um, a- and upcoming work being led by Commissioner Lewis relates to a child rights, uh, report looking at how government systems and funding is upholding the rights of Queensland's children.
Um, a- and i- in terms of that right-based, how does that also play in with the themes of your role? Uh, in terms particularly when looking at the systemic issues for children and families?
Yes, so our recent, um, submission in relation to our act uh, quite clearly called for or identified the benefit that would occur if our act gave a function to the commission to specifically focus on rights and child rights as well as the rights of First Nations people in Queensland. Because our act doesn't have that explicit, um, functional power to focus on rights, we're more drawing on our current functions to protect, safeguard and advocate for the safety and wellbeing of Queensland's children and families. And within that function, taking a rights-based approach to our work.
Uh, in terms then, just going finally to the legislative review that you've conducted, uh, there was a number of changes that your office has recommended. Uh, they speak to the ministerial direction, the capacity for, uh, greater information gathering.
Yes.
A- 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 for example. Uh, are there any matters that you wish to speak to, particularly as relevant to your, to the commission's experience of its review for Caleb and Jonathan?
W- well, to summarise what I, I believe we've been discussing, it's the contradiction that there are powers to, uh, compel the production of confidential information and conduct case-specific reviews but only when a child has passed away. Um, if we are to create a, a body that explores risks and issues for children and families um, in Queensland, those powers could be better applied to times when there are non-death incidents or when there are clear risks in a system where the re- review based on a child death does not occur. So applying the powers particularly to compel confidential information, however defined, um, to enable system learnings, uh, is something that we have called for and I strongly support. And secondly, the provision that says that it is not the role of the commission to look into or advocate on individual cases, um, needs more nuance. Uh, so that whilst it would remain the role of the commission to look at systemic issues, we certainly need the ability to draw on, collect and, uh, amplify individual cases of lived experience.
Just finally, I'll just clarify a couple of the dates, uh, that I went through before. Uh, your report with the annexes, the first report was, um, provided on the fourteenth of January, two thousand and twenty-one. Um, a request for a, uh, redacted or, uh, a redacted report was made on the eighth of July, two thousand and twenty-one. And that was provided by your office on the ninth of July. And that, uh, tabled report was published on the twentieth of August, twenty-one.
Yes.
Are there the questions I have?
Yep, thank you. Miss McMillan?
Yes, I have just a couple of questions arising out of council systems cross-examination. Um, Mr. Twyford, it's the case, isn't it, under your Act, I'll call it your Act, twenty-nine capital I, the minister can request specifically the board to inquire into a child that's not, not died but has been subjected to serious injury, is that correct?
That's correct.
Yes, so that may well cover a situation where, um, they've still had contact with the Department of Child Safety within those guidelines, but also incorporates where there's been serious injury as well.
That's correct.
Yes. Second issue I had, have you got a copy of your statement there?
Yes, I do.
Could you have a look at an extra U, please? To last an extra.
Yes.
Now, Mr. Twyford, I know that you, from your statement, you didn't start with the Q F C C until December. So this letter was written to your predecessor, Miss Varden. Could you just have a quick read of that anecdot to yourself, please?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes. Mr. Twyford, is it the case, as far as one part of the letter is redacted, that the Terms of Reference One ru- review report is the same report that the attorney is referring to in paragraph three, where she says she shared the reports with relevant ministers, et cetera?
That would be correct.
Yes, all right. Thank you. I've got nothing further.
Thank you. Miss Mahoney, do you have any further questions?
No, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, Commissioner, uh, I'll ask my colleagues now if they have any questions for you. Commissioner Mason?
No, thank you.
Commissioner Ryan?
Yes, um, Mr. Twyford, are you familiar with a letter that we've received dated one June, twenty twenty to, uh, your predecessor Cheryl Varden, which basically referred the matter to, are you familiar with that, that letter? Or I'm just not quite sure whether we received it from you or otherwise, but it's, it's a letter dated one June, twenty twenty. It's a letter from the Attorney General, the then Attorney General.
It's annexes C.
Anexe C.
Anexe C, sorry.
Yes.
Are you familiar with that?
Yes, I am.
Okay. Um, to some extent, our conversation or the, the examination of this issue almost, um, proceeded as if some of these things weren't known at the beginning. Um, is it not true that in that letter, I think it's the last paragraph of the letter, the Attorney General said to your predecessor, she said, um, talked about the Act, um, you know, the, the, the law under which the investigation would take place. And she said, I'd, look, I'd say as a, um, a pre- um, a preliminary to this, the letter refers to an announcement by a minister on the twenty-ninth of May, at, in the second paragraph. And it says that, uh, and then it appears that as a result of that announcement, the Attorney General has written referring this matter. And in the media at the time, the minister apparently said, the public want answers, so do we. If there is any place in the system that has failed our children, we can make that system right, and that is what we've asked the commission to do. Now, I note in the last paragraph of this, the minister says to you, this is the Attorney General, says, I acknowledge that this may limit the extent and scope of the Q F C C's review. Do you see that?
Sorry, is that on the?
Last pa- last paragraph, first page. I understand that the Q F C C generalised on twenty-seven, section twenty-seven of the Act and then refers to the fact that it doesn't apply to certain other powers?
That's correct.
And then it says, um, I acknowledge that this may limit the extent to which the Q F C C. So it would appear that the, would you agree, the Attorney General is aware of the limitations of the Act that we had been discussing this morning? That you didn't have full powers to access confidential information?
Yes, i- i- in that paragraph, it's referring, I believe, it's referring to Terms of Reference One that's attached to that letter.
Correct.
Which is around the Queensland Family and Child Commission leading the policy procedure review.
Yep.
Acknowledging the limitations that we will not be able to access confidential information for that part. And then goes on to say that the Child Death Review Board would be Terms of Reference Two and Three, where the confidential information would be forthcoming.
She said, so immediately, just, she said it was a possibility that it could be referred at a later time. Um, and then I, I think she even anticipated that she might do that, um, in the future. So the, the, your, the initial inquiry that was set up into the circumstances under which the young boys were found anticipated that first of all, there was a limitation in your ability to conduct a full and thorough review. But it indicated, it seemed to anticipate that at some stage or other, this would be fixed by reference to the, um, Child Death Review, uh, sorry, the, uh, the, yeah, the Child Death Review Board.
Correct.
And then it was made clear, um, I think, I'll just, um, on the second of October, twenty twenty, the Attorney General, I've forgotten, perhaps the, somebody could help me with what that tab is. A letter dated where the Attorney General advised the matter would not be referred to the C R D P. And she didn't give any reasons, but she indicated that she wouldn't be, yes.
Anexe T.
So it's not as if the government wasn't aware of the limitations and they did in fact give you that instruction. They didn't intend to further follow that up. And then on the thirtieth of March, twenty twenty-one, the Attorney General requested that the Principal Commissioner defer any broader discussion of the report until the government had an opportunity to formally consider something. I'm not quite sure from the letter what it is, but it's quite clear that the, what did the words mean or would you have understood those words to mean? Uh, that, uh, I want, I was at, regarding, uh, uh, I would ask that broader discussion regarding the reports be deferred until the government had further. What would you understood that instruction to defer broader discussion to mean?
I object to that question with respect. This is to his predecessor, Mr. Twyford wasn't available. So with respect, it's not fair to him to ask him to interpret the author of another document to another addressee.
That might be fair, but I was really just asking if you received an instruction of that nature, what do you think it meant? I mean, I can't work out what it meant. Do you, would you be able to work out what that might have meant to your predecessor?
If, if I can just be heard on that objection, um, my friend has objected to a very matter that she herself, um, asked a question on, she, my friend asked this witness to interpret, um, a letter. Uh, and this very letter, uh, the paragraph above it where it says, I've shared the reports, so uh, it was asked what that was understood, it, it follows that this witness can be asked what he understands the next sentence means.
Oh, great. Over to you, Mr. Chair, you allowing the question?
I do allow the question. Do you want to be more specific?
Yeah, I, I think that, I think I couldn't have said it better. If you've been asked to comment on the letter already as to what the letter meant, I'm simply asking what another paragraph of the letter means.
So I wo- I would understand, sorry, am I okay to answer?
Yes.
Yes. So I, I would understand that to mean that the report is formally with government and that the role of the Principal Commissioner and commission, um, has ceased whilst government considers that report.
Yes, thank you. That's all of the questions I heard.
Uh, one question, Commissioner, for me, in terms of your community engagement work and the way you engage with the community about your commission, what relationship or engagement do you have with disability advocacy organisations, disability, uh, disabled people's organisation, representative organisations? Can you give me a bit of an idea?
Yes, so we've recently renewed our advisory council that we are allowed to establish under the Act. That includes, um, I'll, I'll have to take advice, but one or two peak disability bodies um, in Queensland as part of our overall thirty-member advisory council that now meets quarterly to provide advice to the commission on what key issues are, and emergent issues are occurring in Queensland. Um, we have a youth advocacy network of around thirty young people and we're, uh, increasing that size to fifty young people in the next six months. Where any young Queenslander between the age of fourteen and twenty-four can apply um, to work with us and we will actually pay them, um, for, for the work that they do to advocate for issues that are, um, near and dear to them. Um, there are some members of that youth advocacy network who have identified, um, disabilities. Uh, but I am not yet aware that we have funded them to, um, produce advocacy pieces in their own right. Uh, more so they've been involved in our submissions to parliamentary committees, including the Mental Health Select Committee, uh, and, uh, established committees in Parliament that consider bills. Uh, so recent amendments to the Youth Justice Act, we engaged our young people. A- and one case study I could point out to you was around a, a young person's contribution to that submission on the, um, cognitive ability of young people caught in the justice system by way of example.
Well, thank you. Thank you very much, Commissioner, for your contribution to the Royal Commission. You may, you may be excused. Thank you. Miss Mahoney, what's next?
Uh, Chair, if we could have a morning to adjournment, uh, and after that, we'll reconvene, uh, the hearing room for the next witnesses.
So the time is now five past eleven, so you are suggesting twenty past eleven that we come back?
It may be half past.
Half past, okay, we will come back at half past eleven. Thank you.
The Royal Commission is now adjourned.
The Royal Commission is now in session.
Miss Eastman?
Uh, thank you, Commissioner. Our final witnesses for today are representatives from the National Disability Insurance Agency, the N D I A. I welcome back Dr. Sam Bennett, who your hall has previously given evidence at the Royal Commission at Public Hearing seventeen and Public Hearing thirty. And welcome Mr. Desmond Lee, who I think this is the first time he's given evidence at the Royal Commission. Uh, commissioners, they'll take, uh, an affirm, each take an affirmation.
I thank you, Miss Eastman. I thank you, Dr. Bennett and Mr. Lee for coming to the Royal Commission. Dr. Bennett, for the third time, so we, we're grateful for your ongoing contribution to the work of our commission. I'm Commissioner McCuehan, this is Commissioner Mason and Commissioner Ryan. I understand, uh, Dr. Bennett, you'll take an affirmation and Mr. Lee, you'll take an oath. So, uh, I'll ask the associate to read out the affirmation to you, Dr. Bennett first.
I will read you the affirmation. At the end, please say yes or I do. Do solemnly and sincerely declare and affirm that the evidence which you shall give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
I do.
I will read you the oath. At the end, please say yes or I do. Do swear by Almighty God that the evidence which you shall give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
I do.
Thank you both. Miss Eastman will now ask you a question.
Thank you, Commissioner McCuehan. Uh, Dr. Bennett and Mr. Lee, you've together prepared a joint statement for the Royal Commission dated the twenty-sixth of April, twenty twenty-three.
Yes, correct.
And, uh, have you both had an opportunity to review the statement?
Yes, yes.
And are the contents of the statement true and correct?
Yes, they are.
Thank you. Now, Dr. Bennett, uh, as I said, you've given evidence on a number of occasions and you continue to hold the position of General Manager, Policy Advice and Research at the N D I A.
I do.
And in the statement, you referred to the, uh, earlier And in the statement, you referred to the uh, earlier statement that you provided to the Royal Commission. Dated the eleventh of November twenty twenty two, which was. Relevant to public hearing thirty concerning guardianship and supportive decision making.
Correct.
Mr. Lee, uh, welcome to the Royal Commission, you hold the position of Acting General Manager. National Delivery at the N D I A, and you've held this role since January this year.
Correct.
And prior to, uh, taking on this role, you've worked with the N D I A since August twenty sixteen.
That's correct.
And you've held some senior executive roles in Queensland with respect to service delivery, is that right?
That's correct.
And you've also performed the role of Queensland State Manager. And you held that role from August twenty eighteen.
That's correct.
Were you in the role of Queensland State Manager at the time, uh, the, this case studies. Uh, looking at, so from twenty eighteen through to the twenty seventh, twenty eighth of May twenty twenty?
Yes, that's right.
And in terms of your role as State Manager. Uh, did you have responsibilities in relation to the transition and general rollout of the N D I S? In Queensland?
Yes, that's correct.
And did you also have particular functions in overseeing how that rollout occurred?
Yes, I did.
And what other functions in addition to the transition or the rollout did you play as the Queensland State Manager?
Uh, counsel, um, in general, ensuring, um, the, the, um. Development of, uh, the agency's presence in Queensland to be able to undertake the, um, transition. Of, um, Queensland participants to the scheme and, um. Be ready to, uh, intake, uh, new participants to the scheme over the course of the three-year transition in Queensland.
And before joining the N D I A, had you had, uh, any professional experience working in the area of disability services?
I did counsel, uh, prior to joining the scheme in August twenty sixteen, uh, I worked, uh, for, um. Uh, some eight years, uh, or so, uh, with the Queensland Government Disability Services. And and with other related services in the Queensland Government.
So during the time that you had the general manager role, would you say that you were familiar with. The particular agencies and departments within Queensland that had responsibility for. Services and support of young people with disability?
Yes.
Right, thank you, now, your involvement in relation to Caleb and Jonathan did not involve any direct. Relationship with either of them or their family, is that right?
That's correct, counsel.
And are we right in understanding that your involvement commenced on or around the twenty eighth of May twenty twenty? Following the media reports of Caleb and Jonathan's father being found deceased. And for the two young men at the time being found in a fairly parlous state, is that right?
That's correct.
And because the, uh, circumstances of the family had attracted media attention. Uh, that meant that as the Queensland General Manager, you had a responsibility. Of ensuring that relevant information was collected within Queensland. So the N D I A would be able to respond to the media reports, is that part of your job?
Uh, not a direct responsibility, counsel, um, but, uh. Um, very, um, strong association with the, um, governance mechanisms. That, uh, the agency had in place with the Queensland Government, yeah.
And, uh, if a matter such as Caleb and Jonathan and the circumstances of their father was a matter of. Public attention in the media, uh, that is the type of matter that might be escalated to the higher levels within the N D I A. Up to the level of the C E O, is that right?
Yes, that's correct.
And it might be the type of matter that might require the senior managers in the N D I A. To report to the Minister as to how, why and what had happened.
Yes.
And you became aware, uh, either on or shortly after the twenty eighth of May twenty twenty. That Caleb was an N D I S participant, but his younger brother, then seventeen, was not. An N D I S participant, is that right?
That's correct.
And in terms of your knowledge of the circumstances of both Caleb and Jonathan, are we right in understanding? That for the most part, your knowledge is based on review of documents. And what others told you within the N D I A as they collected relevant information in those immediate days. After the twenty eighth of May.
Yes, that is correct.
And, um, are we right in understanding that neither of you personally were involved in the review that was conducted by the N D I A?
Yes, correct.
All right, I do want to ask you some questions about the review, but I thought I might start Commissioners with. Just going back in time and to, uh, make sure that we're all clear. About the nature of Caleb and Jonathan's. Relationship, if I can call it that, with the N D I A prior to their father's death, so I might start with that. Uh, as you're aware, the N D I A did conduct a review. And I'm going to rely on the facts as found in the N D I A review in terms of the circumstances. Of both Caleb and Jonathan and their relationship with the N D I A. Uh, I can say to you Commissioners, there's a vast number of documents that sit behind this, so, um, I think it may be of. Assistance to all to work with the N D I A review, uh, report. So have you both got a copy of the report?
Yes.
All right, and, uh, I'll start with Caleb first. And, uh, there's matters that are recorded at page twenty of the N D I A report, if that assists you. In terms of any of the factual circumstances, I really essentially want to run through the dates for the most part. Oh, it appears from the report that the process for Caleb to become an N D I S participant. Commenced on or around the twentieth of December twenty sixteen. The process of becoming a participant, whether we call it application or otherwise. Is described as access, an access met decision, is that right? That's the language you use?
That's the, that's correct, counsel, so, um, uh, determination, uh, on a, on an application for access would be called. Um, access met or access not met.
So when, when we look at the report and there's language such as access met decision. If I could put that into a layperson's, uh, language, that means that an application has been made to. Become an N D I S participant, that the process of providing the information to the N D I S. To determine whether the person qualifies, and there's some steps involved in that. And that the C E O or the C E O's delegate then makes a decision that access is met. And that is, in a sense, confirming that the application to become a participant's been successful. Is that a a layperson, fair layperson summary?
Yes.
When you refer to any particular aspect of the review report, would that be available up on the screen or will you point us directly? To the relevant part at the time?
I'll point you to the relevant time, uh, Commissioners, I don't, I'm not reading from the report. I'm using the report so that you all have the relevant dates, but I will refer to a particular paragraph. Or a page number if I need you to look at something relevant, I'm partly doing this to, uh. Make sure that I don't take up too much time reading parts of the report, but just really focusing on the. Key dates and steps, but if there's any concerns, Commissioners, let me know and I'm happy to slow down.
Thank you for clarifying that.
So, at the time, Caleb, uh, becomes a participant, so he, the application is accepted. We understand that occurred by the third of March twenty eighteen. And at that time, Caleb was still seventeen years old.
Correct.
The next step, having met access and become accepted as a participant, is the process of a planning meeting. And the purpose of the first planning meeting is to identify what the necessary. And reasonable supports may be for a new participant. And the exercise of planning to identify what the participants' goals might be. They may be goals, uh, connected to short-term, medium-term or long-term goals.
That's correct.
But essentially, the aim is to develop a plan that identifies the supports that are required. And work to achieving goals so that the supports match the achievement of particular goals.
That's correct.
A planning meeting occurred on the seventh of August twenty eighteen. And by this stage, Caleb would have been eighteen years old, so just pausing there. Uh, at the planning meeting, the N D I A would have records of what occurred at that planning meeting.
Yes.
And to the extent you have knowledge of the first planning meeting. Are you aware that the planning meeting was held with Caleb's father, Mr. Barrett?
Yes.
And to what extent do you have any knowledge of the level of involvement of Caleb himself in that meeting?
Uh, I understand, counsel, that Caleb was present at the meeting, um. Uh, Caleb and his father attended one of our service delivery sites to, um, undertake that first planning meeting.
And would a decision have been made at that time or at an earlier point in time? That Caleb himself may require a nominee or a representative to help him engage with the N D I A?
It would have, um, likely been understood by the planner in their preparation for that meeting that, um. Uh, Caleb had recently become an adult, um, by law, and, uh, that, um. Uh, he would require, may require someone to be acting as a nominee on his behalf.
Right, and that's a topic that I want to come back to a little bit later about the nature of a nominee. But would it be fair to assume that for that planning meeting, essentially. All of the discussion was directed to Mr. Barrett and any decisions. Description of services and supports required would have all been. Uh, provided by Mr. Barrett.
That's correct.
So at that planning meeting, the result was that there was a first plan. And that was ready by the seventeenth of August twenty eighteen, and that first plan identified. A sum of, just over a hundred and two thousand dollars for Caleb's first plan.
Mm-hmm, that's correct.
Is it the N D I A's expectation that the participant would use those funds for. The necessary and reasonable supports in their lives?
That's correct.
And to use those funds to achieve the particular goals identified in their plan?
Yes, that's correct.
The, this plan was set for, uh, about a year to two years, is that right?
It would, uh, uh, would have been a twelve-month plan, yeah.
And you're aware, aren't you, and this is included in the findings, that in the first twelve months of Caleb's plan. The sum equivalent to three hundred and sixty one dollars was the total. Use of the funds out of the over a hundred and two thousand dollars, uh, available to him, you're aware of that?
Yeah, I'm aware of that.
And to the extent the funds comprising three hundred and sixty one dollars was used, it was. Recorded as being used for transport and for continents products.
Mm-hmm, that's correct.
And in terms of where the funds went, the funds of three hundred and sixty one dollars went directly. Into Paul Barrett's account.
For transport, correct.
Uh, as far as we're aware, was there ever any type of bank account for Caleb independent of his father?
No.
And the circumstances in which the sum of three hundred and sixty one dollars went into Paul Barrett's account. Would have been the result of what?
They would have typically been for what we call periodic transport payments, so they are. Payments that would go directly to the participant or the nominee to assist them to purchase, um. Disability-relevant transport to, um, access, access the community and services in the community.
Right, so, uh, would, uh, a participant who had a hundred, over a hundred and two thousand dollars in their. First plan, just starting out as a participant, if such a very small amount. Of the overall funds available was used in that first year, should that have been a red flag to anyone in the N D I A?
Yes, it should have been.
And you're aware that in Caleb's case. What happened after the first twelve months was a second planning meeting. That second planning meeting did not go into the detail of the utilisation of Caleb's funds. But that planning meeting, which was led by Paul Barrett, uh, resulted in. Mr. Barrett making it very clear that he didn't feel that Caleb needed support, is that right?
That appears to be the case, yes.
And the records for the planning meeting with Caleb, Mr. Barrett and. A person described as an unidentified support worker on the ninth of August twenty nineteen. Records the following interactions with Mr. Barrett, and Commissioners, this is page twenty five of the. Report, under the heading Second Plan, sub-paragraph B. Paul Barrett was very hostile, swore throughout the meeting. And was reluctant to provide any information about Caleb's supports. Paul Barrett indicated he was very unhappy with the lack of communication from the agency. And there was no implementation meeting, and he was not aware of how much was funded. When the funding was explained, Paul Barrett stated, quote, the funding was highly unnecessary. And he requested only continent aids, as, as that was all Caleb would use. The planner discussed other supports which may be beneficial, however. Paul Barrett said he did not want anything else from the N D I S and would prefer to work with Disability Queensland. Over the page, and I won't read all of them, is, it was very clear, looking at the dot points. That Mr. Barrett did not want a support coordinator, he said he was paying for a carer. Who was identified as a family friend or neighbour, he was paying the carers. Uh, support from his pension, he said the transport was not funded by him. But he was specific about the funding he would like for Caleb re-transport. He said the cleaner was coming once a week and he paid for that from his pension, and he said this. He did not want home cleaning funded by the N D, N D I S. And Mr. Barrett had health concerns, including presenting with an enlarged tongue and having difficulty speaking at the meeting. There, the points highlighted in the N D I A review of that meeting. There is nothing in these notes to indicate even the slightest of attempts. To gauge Caleb's views about his own plan and the supports he wanted. Do you agree that summary gives you a sense that the child, well, then young man, not longer a child. Was actually irrelevant in this whole process, was he not?
I understand he was not particularly engaged in the process, that's correct.
He wasn't engaged at all, was he?
Uh, um, information, uh, that I've been given was that, um. Um, he was, um, present but, um, moving around the room, but, um. Not interested in the proceedings or didn't appear to have any understanding of what was happening.
And the report records that the planner who developed and approved the plan advised the review team that she was, quote, a bit concerned. About the lack of supports engaged for Caleb, but Paul Barrett was very adamant. That he would have been reluctant to use them regardless of whether or not they're included. So do you not see an absolute conflict here between the interests of Paul Barrett and the interests of. The N D I S participant?
That is apparent in hindsight, counsel.
And at the time, and I'm looking at page twenty seven of the report, paragraph K. The agency guidance at the relevant time did not include information on what. Agency staff should do in circumstances where they form a view that the nominee is not acting in the best interests of the participants.
That guidance was not clear at the time in the agency, that's correct.
But would you not have expected that the. But would you not have expected that the, uh, planners and the staff of the N D I A. Would have used common sense to identify a conflict. And to understand that in this case Mister Barrett was not acting in the best interests of his son.
Um, counsel, um, what I would say is, um. At that time, uh, we received information from the Queensland Government. About any persons who are with a disability that were considered, um, to be active. Or, or what they called a defined participant. Uh, who may have been receiving services, uh, through Queensland Government, um, disability related services. Um, Caleb, uh, the data received about Caleb was that. He was a defined participant, so determined by the Queensland Government as. Having received supports, um, similar to, uh, the, the types of supports the N D I S would fund under the Queensland Government. Um, disability services, um, system. So in that, um, it, um, and the agreement or the, uh, with the Queensland Government. Uh, in other state governments was that, um, defined participants would be supported. To, to have a streamlined entry into the N D I S. Um, and in that, um, in, information was often received about. Who was, um, the authorised person who would be acting on behalf of the participant. And I believe we had information to state that, um, uh, the father in this case was acting as the authorised person.
Did you have, uh, as far as your records indicate, any information about the father? And the extent to which the father had been engaged in. Uh, the work of any other Queensland agencies, child protection, health, housing, police or the like?
No.
Do you have any information as to whether or not Mister Barrett may have been convicted of any criminal offences?
No.
So the information was really based on the fact that he was Caleb's father?
That's largely the extent of it, counsel.
But the N D I A records didn't record Mister Barrett as Caleb's father in the system. He was recorded as other.
That, uh, would have been the information that we received from the Queensland Government.
Right.
Yeah.
So coming back to the second plan, notwithstanding what seemed to be a fairly difficult meeting for those involved. The end result was that the second plan was, uh, funded to the level of just over eight thousand dollars. Now, what would explain the very significant disparity from the over a hundred and two thousand dollars in the first plan? And then twelve months later, the total funding being just over eight thousand dollars?
I understand counsel that, um, that was largely due to the father in this case, um. Um, asserting that he didn't need funding for other types of supports. So a plan was built, um, um, ar- around the types of supports that the father had indicated that he would utilise.
And you're aware, aren't you, that there was no utilisation of the funds available in the second plan?
That's, I'm aware of that.
There's a third plan developed and that was not a, a scheduled review. And that occurred in or around the fifteenth of January twenty twenty. The circumstances of that review arose because Paul Barrett was in hospital. And he contacted the agency planner from hospital, advising that he needed more funding for Caleb. The process was initiated on the same day and completed on the same day. Is that, um, sort of usual practice within the N D I A to undertake a review so rapidly?
Um, that counsel can, uh, is a practice and it can be done, um, where a case, um, requires prioritisation.
And was there anything to your knowledge, and accepting that you're relying only on what you've been told or reviewed? That indicated that this was a matter of particular priority? And I'm asking you that given the background that you've had that engagement with Paul Barrett. Who'd made it pretty clear that Caleb didn't need any assistance. And that there had been that reduction in the funds available to him in the plan. So what was so significant about the fifteenth of January?
Um, counsel, the, the significance would have been that we were contacted by a, a. Primary carer of a vulnerable person, uh, with a disability that, that had been hospitalised. Um, and, and that potentially, um, could have put the, uh, participant at risk. Um, um, due to the, um, primary carer role being disrupted or breaking down. So there was a need to make sure we responded in a way that, that addressed that.
When you're talking about the question of risk, what risks is the N D I A concerned with?
Um, clearly when it, when it comes to vulnerable people, it's a risk of harm. Uh, abuse, neglect and violence primarily.
But here the risk was just the absence of the father and an assumption that Caleb would not be able to support himself.
Correct.
Was there anything else that was taken into account in identifying any risk? That, uh, resulted in the plan being initiated and reviewed on the same day?
No, counsel, that was the only information we had to hand.
Right, and the report at page twenty nine, and commissioners, this is paragraph D. At the top of page twenty nine. Sets out some of the findings from the review on the question of risk. So Mister Lee, the, uh, third plan was then, uh, developed. And that saw an increase in the funds available to Caleb. And the third plan was funded at just over forty one thousand dollars, is that right?
That's correct.
And by the time of Paul Barrett's death in May twenty twenty. Only just over twelve hundred dollars had been utilised for Caleb's necessary and reasonable supports.
That's correct.
So when, uh, Paul Barrett passed away and the young men were in hospital. There was a need for a further review of their plan, but that was a very significant review. That resulted in Caleb's plan changing substantially in terms of having. Supported independent living and services provided by us, uh, an independent. Support provide, support, sorry, service provider, no longer family arrangement, is that right?
Yeah.
So that's Caleb's journey up to the twenty seventh of May, I want to turn to Jonathan now. So Jonathan's, uh, attempts to become an N D I S participant also start. On, in, uh, December twenty sixteen. And the, and it's page twenty one, commissioners of the report, if that assists. So twelve December twenty sixteen is the access process commenced. So that access process means the application process, is that right?
Uh, um, uh, no, um.
Is that a different?
Yeah, it is, counsel, um, um, that is when we would have received information. From the Queensland Government about, uh, Jonathan and, and, um, and made first attempts to. Notify, um, the participant or the family that, um, uh, the N D I S would be, um. Beginning, um, the process to, um. Um, con- consider, um, their eligibility for the, the N D I S.
Right, and you, uh, I think have been present in the hearing room. Where the principal commissioner from the Queensland Family and Child Commission gave evidence earlier today.
Yes.
And referred to, uh, uh, two reports, a, a full report and then a redacted report. Being provided, you're aware of that?
Yes.
That report, uh, notes that the Jonathan School. Was part of the agencies in Queensland. That tr- started off this access process for him, are you aware of that?
Uh, no, counsel.
Are you aware of Jonathan's school having anything to do with? The process of him becoming an N D I S participant?
No, counsel.
So in terms of Jonathan's process, the report on page twenty one. Uh, sets out some of the steps taken. Am I right in understanding that there was some correspondence back and forth in relation to. Sorry, correspondence one way in relation to requests, but not information coming back to the N D I A. And the result was that by the ninth of April twenty eighteen, Jonathan's access application was automatically cancelled.
That's correct.
By this stage though, uh, the older brother. Access met decision, so his application had been successful as at the third of March twenty eighteen. Was there anything in the N D I A system that linked the brothers together?
No, counsel.
Why not?
Uh, that was an idiosyncrasy of the, uh, system at the time. Counsel, it, um, the design of the system, um, was such that, um. It didn't have ability to link, um, siblings and family members in the system, um, that it does today.
And, uh, when you say it does today, is that a result of the circumstances that arose from this case study?
In part, the review of this case study and others.
And the end result, when we talk about Jonathan's access to the N D I A. It basically stopped at the ninth of April twenty eighteen. And it doesn't revive until after the twenty seventh of May. Where I think you then became involved. And it became apparent pretty quickly on the twenty eighth of May, that Jonathan was not an N D I S participant. He was a child.
Mm-hmm.
He had disability.
Yes.
And he would be, uh, a young person who would require necessary and reasonable supports. With respect to living with his disability.
That's correct.
So in terms of what you were able to assess in one day on or around the twenty eighth of May. Uh, had been, may I respectfully put to you, completely missed and overlooked for the previous four years.
I think that's a fair assertion, counsel.
And given the interaction between the N D I A and Caleb's father. Mister Barrett, the N D I A was on notice that Mister Barrett was very resistant. To having any supports for one son. Was there an assumption at any point that the N D I A would face similar difficulties? If Jonathan also became a N D I S participant?
Uh, there wasn't an assumption at the time, counsel.
Is there, was there anything in the N D I A system that would have allowed Jonathan slipping through the gaps as he did? To have been detected at the time?
Um, no, counsel, um, not, not the kinds of safeguards we have today.
So Jonathan's ability to access the necessary and reasonable supports that he required. To live a life with dignity depended solely on the cooperation and action of his father. To facilitate his access to this important support.
At that time, counsel, yes.
Do you accept that, um, notwithstanding the transition period? And notwithstanding the sort of glitches that might occur in the, the rollout. But that is a very significant oversight that creates great risk for young people with disability. Who depend only on their parents to be able to access services and supports.
I accept that, counsel.
So when Jonathan and Caleb were then in hospital, there was a very rapid response, was there not? To ensuring that relevant service providers could be identified. There was a discussion about whether they would remain at their family home. Notwithstanding that it would need a very significant deep clean, I think is the language used. And to organise supports in their own home. That did not transpire and that the young men then moved into alternative accommodation, which we've heard about over the last day or so. The other feature was that, uh, in the absence of their father. There had to be some assistance for them, did there not, either by nominee or a child representative? To engage with the N D I A. And was there an issue that arose in relation to Jonathan's mother? Taking on that role as child representative?
Um.
Do you have any knowledge of that?
Not clear on that.
But you're aware, uh, aren't you, that the public guardian was appointed for both Caleb and Jonathan?
Yes.
And one of the reasons the guardianship applications were granted and orders made. Was to assist both young men as they navigated the N D I A.
Yes.
Now, I think Doctor Bennett, I've previously asked you questions about the relationship between guardians and the N D I A. And you may recall at public hearing thirty, one of the issues that the Royal Commission heard was that there had been an increase. In the number of guardianship applications. Based on the need for a guardian to support people navigate the N D I A and. I, I don't, I'm not asking you to recall the detail, but we generally had that exchange, uh, at public hearing thirty last year.
We have, counsel, yes.
And one of the issues around that was whether or not, uh, people with disability who become N D I A participants. Really require a guardian to help them navigate. Because is the issue the complexity of the N D I A? Or is the issue something inherent that for people with disability, the N D I A is, has got a number of barriers? So it's which side it came from. Looking at this example, which we didn't discuss at public hearing thirty. Is the young people did need a guardian to navigate the N D I A, you agree with that?
Not necessarily, just in respect that under our legislation, um, which does. Uh, uh, consider, uh, the requirement for representative decision makers. Um, that is a, a nominee and, or, or a child representative and they do not have to be, um, guardians, although in many cases they are.
If, for example, uh, they didn't need a guardian, but their parents were not able to serve that purpose. Is there someone in between, either an independent advocate? Or another person who can take on that role of assisting young men? In Caleb and Jonathan's circumstances to, uh. Navigate and work through the N D I A to ensure that they get the best supports that they require.
Through our engagement with, um, uh, people in similar circumstances to the children in this, uh, case. Um, we, uh, should look at, uh, what supports somebody has around them, um, either family or friends. Um, or others that may be in a position to support their decision making around the scheme and not leap to the, um. Uh, appointment of a, of a nominee, uh, rather to see that as a, as a last resort. It is possible for a participant, um, uh, to, uh, provide consent for somebody to, to act on their behalf around. Particular, um, decisions, um, so that would be, um, a, um, uh. A sort of less formal way of ensuring that there is some, uh, supports for decision making around someone in, uh, in these, in these circumstances.
Stepping back and looking at this case study as a whole, uh. Uh, one conclusion that might be open to the Royal Commissioners is. That throughout Jonathan and Caleb's lives, particularly during the time they're in the care of their father. It was, it appears that no one ever even assumed. That either of them had any capacity to exercise any type of choice. Or to have any control over their lives at all. The conversations we have about the importance of the principle of choice and control just seems to be wholly absent. In the lives of these young men and by everybody around them, be their, their immediate family. Their community and then, uh, government agencies. So you're, you're saying, well, maybe they didn't need a guardian and maybe they could have navigated the system. Does that have to start from the premise that they both had a requisite capacity to exercise some degree of choice and control?
It does and it should. It does and it should, and I think it's important to um, acknowledge as our internal review report did. But while we acted within um, our legislated role, um, uh, there were. Uh, was guidance that was in place that was not followed, there were um, gaps in our guidance at that point in time. Um, attributable primarily um, to uh. System deficiencies and or process immaturity that reflected the. Point in time at which the scheme was back in, in sort of twenty sixteen through to twenty eighteen here uh, in Queensland. Absolutely central to the legislation under which we operate is the concept of assuming capacity. Um, of the importance of um, uh, people being involved to the extent possible in decision making and having. Choice and control, as you, as you rightly say, um, and I would uh, be confident that. Uh, in, under current settings, um, many more opportunities would have been taken to explore. Uh, with um, uh, these children and the family, what support could be put in place other than a. Uh, a nominee appointment to support their decision making, yes.
Thank you. So I want to then turn to the N D I A's action by committing a review. And the commissioners have the report and on page five, that tells us that the C E O. Established terms of reference dated the eleventh of June twenty twenty. And a copy of the terms of reference are also included in the report. The purpose of the N D I A's review was to review all relevant matters, including actions and interactions relating to. Caleb and Jonathan's transfer into and the time as N D I S participants. Uh, and the events following the death of their father. The review was to go through to the period fourth of, the fourth of June twenty twenty. So the nature of this review, as set out in the report, was to uh, examine. All of the relevant government engagement and support engagements with each of the two young men, is that right?
Correct.
And to what extent did the N D I A have any powers to compel any information? From any of the Queensland agencies or departments that may have engaged with each of the young men over the course of their life?
The N D I A doesn't have any coercive powers in that regard and it's legislation, counsel.
So if there was uh, any engagement with external agencies, particularly Queensland departments and agencies. That had to be on um. A basis where there was an agreement about the exchange of information?
Correct.
And was the N D I A aware that the Queensland? Family and Child Commissioner had been asked to undertake a review as well?
Yes.
And by the twentieth of July twenty twenty, the Q F C C, if I can use that abbreviation. Had uh, expressed some preliminary views in relation to what may have occurred to Caleb and Jonathan. You, were you aware of that?
Um, we were, we were aware that uh, that, that, that had occurred.
Were you aware that some of the matters that the Q F C C was. Uh, examining was Jonathan's access to the N D I S?
We assume so.
Dr Bennett, jump in, uh, my questions are open to both of you to jump in.
Yes.
And uh, there was an understanding at the Queensland level that Jonathan's N D I S application was rejected by the N D I A. Now that sounds like there has been a process. And a result that, that a decision had rejected him from the N D I S. But that, that would not be right, would it?
No, no.
It's a cancellation because those preliminary steps, Mister Lee, as you've described, hadn't been completed. And the cancellation in effect is like a lapse, it's just lapsed, is that right?
Yes, correct.
So uh, to the extent that uh, Queensland was e- examining the. Conduct of the N D I A. Was the N D I A involved in providing information to Queensland to assist the Q F C C in her investigation at the time?
Yes, I, I believe we, we um, provided some um. Um, non-identifiable information about um. Uh, timings of, of, of our procedures and uh, of the likes in our processes at the time.
And to the Q F C C that there wasn't a decision that was a rejection? Would you give any information to explain the process?
I, I couldn't say to that level of detail, counsel.
And uh, were you aware of the Q F C? Uh, making some findings that might on one view be adverse to the N D I A? In relation to, for example, placing considerable responsibility on a parent to understand the evidence needed. About their child's disability and working with professionals to gather it?
We were, we would have been aware of that, uh, following the um, um, public ma, the, the summary report being made public.
And that the N D I A must strengthen available supports to assist vulnerable families to navigate and complete the application process?
Yes.
Were you aware whether the Q F C C made any findings about the extent to which any particular Queensland? Department or agency also had a responsibility in assisting. Families of children who might be described as vulnerable in accessing, navigating and completing the application process?
Only to the extent that it was uh, touched on in the summary report, counsel.
And to extent the Q F C C made some findings concerning Caleb, noting that he was an adult. At all relevant times when the plans were in place. That uh, that. This is described him as a child living with disability relying on their parents to coordinate supports under the N D I S on their behalf. And if parents are not able or willing to access those supports, their children miss out on vital N D I S services. And uh, a suggestion that perhaps it by inference. That it was for the N D I A to play some type of safeguarding role. In relation to ensuring that their children, even if it's an adult child, would have access to N D I S services.
Yes.
So you're aware of those findings?
Yes.
But you were not aware of those findings in July twenty twenty? When uh, the N D I A was into the process of its own investigation, is that right?
That's correct.
So the N D I A process took some time. Uh, there was some point in time in the process where once Caleb and Jonathan were settled in their new home. And I think the word to describe them was safe, but that took a bit of urgency out of finishing the N D I A review, is that right?
Um, I'm not sure if that was uh, the, the, the factor, um, counsel per se, um. But potentially prioritisation of review of other cases that may have been more urgent, um. Um, that, that took precedent, uh.
Must have been a pretty bad case if it was more urgent than this one.
Uh, counsel, I would say that, that the review was initiated, I believe, in, in, in June, um. The original end date was intended to be August, but that then was extended to November, so it, it did run. Um, for, for a total of, of, of five months, which although longer than intended, I think is, is a. An appropriate timeframe to be looking into the, um, uh, the level of issues concerned in this case.
Were there any impediments to the N D I A being able to conduct a full and thorough review? With respect to being able to access information from Queensland departments and agencies?
Not within the terms of reference of the review, which were primarily focused quite tightly on the extent to which we fulfilled our. Um, legislated obligations under the Act and areas where we could seek to improve, so although. Um, the review looked briefly at the extent to which, um, post the incident, um, uh. Of the father's death, we engaged with those agencies, it, it did not seek to look holistically at, um, the role of other agencies in this, in this matter.
Okay, so the findings, uh, commissioners, you'll find at page thirty six of the report, starting at part seven. And Dr Bennett and Mister Lee, there are a number of findings there, if I can just deal with them at a fairly high level. Uh, first, that relevant information was not always appropriately or accurately recorded on Caleb and Jonathan's files. In a manner consistent with the agency guidance and the requirements of the Privacy Act. So that was a, a general finding around the information and record keeping. But there were then particular findings relevant to the process of transition. Uh, that concerned how Jonathan slipped between the gaps. There were uh, some findings in relation to the access processes for both Caleb and Jonathan. And I think there was a recognition that the very long period. Of time before Jonathan could become a participant was a matter of concern in the findings, should agree with that?
Yes.
There were some findings in relation to the underutilisation of Caleb's plans. And uh, the finding at page thirty eight makes this observation. It's the top of the page, paragraph D, it says. Noting the significant underutilisation of Caleb's plan, however. The review team considered it unlikely that Paul Barrett would have accessed supports for Jonathan in any event. So is that in a sense, uh, based on? Mister Barrett's resistance and reluctance to have supports for one son, it would assume that Jonathan would be in the same position? Why would that, why would that assumption be ma, you're nodding, why would that assumption be made? They have similar disability, but they also have different disability, they're different ages. Jonathan was still a child at the time, an attending school. Why would the assumption be made that Barrett's response to one child would uh, follow that? He would have the same response for the other child?
Um, in, in the review report produced, counsel, um. You know, it wa, it, it became clear that uh, the, the motives and behaviours of Mister Barrett. Um, um, with regard to one, one adult aged child, um. Was likely to have been um, similar with the other child and. Um, likely evidenced in, in, in his reluctance to. Um, provide information to support a successful access, um, uh, successful access to the scheme for Jonathan.
Is there not a risk in assuming that because they're brothers and because they both had the same. Soul carer for whom they were dependent, that their experience would also be the same?
Um, I guess there, there is a small, small risk in making that assumption, counsel, um. Um, but I don't think it's an unreasonable assumption to have been made in this regard.
But that, that assumption is uh, supporting a finding that Jonathan. Would be at risk of not being able to have the supports that he required. And would that not highlight for the N D I A the importance of perhaps? Having an alternative person to somebody like their father actively involved in Jonathan's supports?
Um, in hindsight, yes, that is correct.
Other findings concerned the planning and the underutilisation. There's findings in relation to the nominee and guardianship processes. And some findings in relation to information that was available, so I'll just summarise that broadly. Recommendations were also identified in this report, commissioners, this is at page forty one, under part eight. And there's a number of recommendations identified. The Royal Commission asked you to provide us with a statement outlining what actions the N D I A has taken. Since this report has been finalised and the recommendations identified. And the statement that you've provided to the Royal Commission is an extremely detailed and comprehensive statement. Covering uh, all of the recommendations and issues. I want to just focus on two in the time available. And the first one is about nominees. And we've touched on this a little earlier, I think, Dr Bennett, you said there's now some changes in place in relation to nominees. So the question that we asked about nominees starts on page twenty four of your statement. The question we asked you, question nine, appears on that page in some blue shaded text. And then at paragraph one hundred and seventeen, which starts at the bottom of that page. And continuing over the page sets out the relevant recommendation. And at paragraph one hundred and eighteen, you refer to something called the nominee rules. Now, these nominee rules were in place at all relevant times concerning both Caleb and Jonathan's. Uh, attempts to access and become N D I S participants. To what extent do, in the review, did the? Need, if any, to amend the nominee rules arise? And what changes have occurred in relation to the nominee process as a result of the review? So, Dr Bennett, should I direct that question to you?
Uh, yes, counsel, that's um, that's, that's fine. Um, I think, yes, the, the review, as you've said, the recommendation, um, uh, in relation to that did. Um, say that consideration should be given to whether an amendment is required in the N D I S Act and, and nominee, nominee rules. Um, the agency did um, start work on, uh, with the Department of Social Services, because of course the. Uh, the rules are not um, sort of ours to, uh, to rewrite, but in the context of. Uh, the TUNE review at the time, that had been looking at a review of the N D I S Act primarily. Um, related to the introduction of um, timeframes and service standards associated with the participant service guarantee. Um, the rules were being looked at in the context of that, that review, so we, we did. Um, uh, do some work with the department primarily to look at the extent to which. The rules could be strengthened to um, ensure that nominees were acting not just. Um, to promote the personal and social wellbeing of a participant, um, under their, uh, care, but to. Um, uh, support wherever possible their will and preference. Um, and also to strengthen aspects of the rules that went to the nominee role in building the capacity of the. Participant to make decisions over time. Um, the changes to the N D I S Act, uh, re, relating to the participant service guarantee. Came in as of August, uh, twenty twenty two. Um, rules, uh, to support that and indeed, um, any revised rules associated with the TUNE review. Um, have not so far been um, progressed, um, but are, um, uh, will be subject, I think, to recommendations from this. Royal Commission and to the N D I S review happening in, um, parallel, government will consider those, so. Changes to the rules were not progressed, changes we did progress internally as an agency were to. Um, our operational guidelines, which um, uh, translate those rules into um, plain English and describe the processes through which. Uh, we and the considerations um, that we make in making a, a nominee appointment. Um, the uh, roles and responsibilities of a nominee and some of the steps that can be taken uh, in instances where. Uh, there are concerns as to the ability of the nominee to fulfil those obligations or indeed any risks have been identified. Um, uh, uh, in that, in that arrangement. Um, that operational guideline, uh, was revised and, and published. Uh, I believe in um, early twenty twenty two, together with revised standard operating procedures to support staff to. Navigate that, new fact sheets for nominees describing the, uh, the nominee, um, role. Um, and then I think the other relevant, uh, um, uh, development since. Uh, the recommendations in the review here relate specifically to the work that the agency's undertaken. In the intervening period to develop a supportive decision-making policy that we talked about, uh, at, uh, hearing thirty, but which has now been.
That was released last week?
Last Friday, yes, counsel.
So it seems to be sort of three elements to this. Uh, the first element is what does the legislative and rules-based approach need to be for the N D I A? Secondly, how do you ensure that the N D I A staff and N D I A partners understand? Those rules and understand their responsibilities in relation to those rules? But the third, and may I suggest, a very important element is the nominee themselves. Not only understanding their obligations as a nominee, but actually understanding the context and system. Not only understanding their obligations as a nominee, but actually understanding the context and system within their working. To what extent on that third element, which is supporting somebody like a Paul Barrett, who clearly, on the material available, did not really understand the process? Had a suspicion of government or agencies intervening or being involved in his life? What steps have been taken for the Paul Barretts in the community who may need to be a nominee? What's available to them to understand their roles, responsibilities and concepts such as conflicts of interest?
In addition to the operational guideline, which does cover many of those elements and in as plain English as, as possible, there are a number of fact sheets that we've published since the time of the review into this case that do summarise in accessible formats information about roles and responsibilities for, for nominees. I, I think it is an area where we have more work to do. And the work I referred to just now under the supported decision making policy is the vehicle through which we can continue to improve the support that we offer to, to nominees in their role. And the implementation plan that we published as part of the release of that policy last week does relate specifically to actions we will take to develop targeted training for nominees to understand their role in supporting participant decision making. That has not yet occurred.
That's all still very text based. Fact sheets, material on the internet, words, language. It's a very text based approach. For people in our community who are not text people, or public servants, lawyers, people who are used to the written word and engage with that. What's the alternatives available to understanding that information without having to engage with the text?
That would be engaging with our, with our staff, with our, with our partners or with willingness, with a support coordinator who would have been and was in this instance, but to little effect provided for within a plan because their key role includes helping people in such a position, whether that be the participant or the nominee, to understand the supports in the plan and how they can be used, to develop the participant's capacity around decision making and to broker engagement with providers to ensure that those supports are, are being, are being used effectively. We do have now many more triggers within our system that would have led to proactive follow up by phone with, with the father in this, in this instance. Both the absence of any service bookings having been made after the plan approval within four weeks. The absence of any payments having been made against the plan within six would both have led to a participant check in conversation, which has been a core part of our operational approach since August twenty twenty, having first been introduced during the Covid pandemic. And that would have afforded an opportunity, at least, to spot further risks and to offer further support for the participant or the nominee to, to better discharge their obligations under the legislation.
So again, just using Mr Barrett. He's a person who's suspicious of government. He's not a person who uses text, he's not writing. To suggest that his understanding of his responsibilities could be gained by talking to the N D I A staff, he perceives them as government, he's got a deep suspicion of them. If, if that's the option, there's nothing to stop a sort of Paul Barrett situation occurring again, is it?
I think a variety of the changes and improvements we've made since the time of the review that I've referred to would make that less likely. But it is still, it is still, still possible, yes, I would say.
The other on nominees is for children. And the N D I S has the children's rule twenty thirteen. And they were effective from the eighteenth of June twenty thirteen. So relevant at the time for these two young men. The children's rules assume that families, for the most part, are functioning and functional and that parents and families being significant persons in the lives of young people with disability should be acknowledged and respected. But they're assumed that parents will act in the best interests of their child to protect the child from harm or promote their development. These rules have a range of assumptions about functioning families. Would you agree with that?
I would.
And often rules need to be in place to assist, for example, N D I S staff and others to know what happens when the assumed state of affairs, which are protective of children, supportive of children and promoting children's rights fail. Agree with that? To the extent these rules identify any protections for children in the way in which the children's rules apply, there are some requirements on the C E O in making a determination about a child's representative that may take into account risk factors to a children, to children. Do you agree with that?
I do.
But for the most part, the rules very much point to the maintenance of functioning families. You agree with that? So I'm just, if you want to have a look at the rules, it's page six of fifteen on the document that you've got at three point five. The, the child representative rules operate with the C E O having regard to the desirability of preserving family relationships and informal support networks of the child. You agree that contains an assumption?
I do.
That parents may be best placed to carry out the duties required of a nominee or a representative in the Act. And then there are a range of elements that the C E O considers in sub paragraph D, which is the existing arrangements that are in place. Whether that person has responsibility for day to day parenting decisions. Whether the person can act in conjunction with other representatives and supporters of the child's in the best interests of the child. So just those ones. Those are factors that also assume a functioning family, but they are the sort of factors if the C E O is looking at the whole state of affairs could also be against perhaps having a parent as a representative if they don't meet these elements. Do you agree with that?
Yes.
In practice, is the emphasis on the functional family model? Or is it looking for dangers in that family model that might create risks to the child or not operate in the best interests of the child?
I think in practice, we attempt to do both. I think as it, we, we, we would in most instances appoint the, the person with parental responsibility as a child representative. We would check if there were a guardian in place and that would be an instance where we may, we may not. So I think there are some protections in, in that and the way that it is, it is enacted.
The next set of factors, which are on page seven, so over the page, concern the consent for the child's, the consent a child's representative may give concerning their criminal history or suitability to work with children checks. And that information depends on the child representative or the proposed representative consenting to release that information, is that right?
Correct.
And if there's a refusal to provide that information or answer questions, that might be a factor taken into account that would work against that person being the representative?
Yes.
There's a tension, is there not, in people being able to maintain their right to privacy, to maintain a right not to be discriminated against based on a criminal record. There's rules around spent convictions in terms of the requirement to disclose. So on one hand, you've got the person who chooses not to disclose. But if they don't disclose, that can then be used against them. There's a tension there, is there not?
There is.
The other is a relevant conviction for an offence under commonwealth state or territory law. And I'm not sure relevant conviction is defined in any way in the rules. But we know in this case that before the birth of Jonathan and while Caleb was still a young person, that there was an incident that had occurred at a hospital which resulted in Mr Barrett being charged with disorderly behaviour. He pleaded guilty and was then convicted. So it's a low range offence, but nevertheless, there's a conviction there. If that knowledge had been available to the N D I A for either the nominee process for Caleb or the child representative, if Jonathan had made his way through, how would that information come to the N D I A? And how would that have been taken into account in terms of Mr Barrett's role as a representative or nominee?
It, it would have made a material difference, in my opinion, if that information had been available at the time. It would have generally spoken to Mr Barrett's suitability as the authorised representative for the two boys. It would have been a piece of, a piece of information that would have been useful in making that determination. As difficult as that determination is to make when the determination is about finding or substituting a parent as the authorised representative. How we would have come to know that would have had to have been through, in this case, the nominee or the authorised representative making that, volunteering that information.
I accept you're not privy to the information available to the Queensland various departments and agencies. But if you assume, I'd take this, that if Mr Barrett was not always truthful and honest in his disclosures with government officials, then how do you safeguard against the person you're relying to give you the information? Not necessarily inclined to give you truthful or complete or accurate information?
Council, it is very difficult without substantial information that other agencies may hold. That is difficult. However, as mentioned here, the processes that the N D I A have, has in place now would provide considerably more opportunities for planners and L A Cs to engage with a reluctant nominee to try and ascertain what are the motives behind their reluctance to engage with the N D I S.
There's nothing in those children's rules that would allow the C E O to take into account, for example, the number of times the parent's behaviour has come to the attention of a child safety officer. A number of times the police have needed to visit the home. The extent to which there's domestic or family violence operating within that family. They're not identified as specific issues that the C E O takes into account in assessing whether or not a particular parent or person is an appropriate child representative. Did you agree with that?
In the rules, yes.
Right. I'm conscious of the time, so can I turn to the utilisation question? So I think we asked you about the monitoring of plans and the extent to which information around low utilisation of plans have been identified. This is at page eighteen of your statement responding to questions six, seven and eight. And I think, Dr Bennett, do I direct this question to you? There are a range of initiatives now in place with respect to support coordinators and people called recovery coaches to try to strengthen the situation of people falling between the gaps in how they use their plans and access the services that they're required. So there's that aspect that's been addressed. But before we get to their role, it's how within the N D I A do you identify a red flag on underutilisation? Or is the underutilisation sort of something that you'd start with the premise of things are going really well? The person doesn't need that level of support and that might be achieving their goals? And isn't this the ultimate aim that we want to achieve? That plans reduce in value over time as people have the support to become more independent? But for these young, this young person, surely this raised a red flag? And I asked you that earlier and I think you said yes. So how would it raise a red flag within the system? And I don't know which one I think you want to take that question.
I'll start and Sam may join in. Council, so, so as mentioned here already, the N D I A has implemented what we refer to as the ongoing check in process. So that is a system analytics based process. So, so it is supported by our systems to look across a number of vulnerability factors that a, that a person may have attributed to them. One of those being underutilisation is one of the eight factors that, that we look at in determining potential risk of vulnerability. Any, any participants who are flagged through that system review that happens weekly is then automatically flagged through to a planner who would typically be the person's N D I S contact for a check in call. That check in call must take place within fourteen days of the planner receiving that notification that a participant has been found to be rated as potential, having potential to be at risk according to our system analytics. And then that planner would then undertake to contact either the participant or their nominee or their child representative to, to follow up on whatever the risk factor was that was identified in the, in the regular review of vulnerable, vulnerable participants within the scheme.
Right. Dr Bennett, do you want to add to that?
Whether in the context of the particular case study the hearing is looking at today, these would have been of, of value is, is debatable. But other elements we have changed or improved since the time of the review are the development of what we call the Plan Implementation Directory, which is available on the N D I S website with a range of tip sheets and guides and budget tools to support participants, perhaps, who just need some help in being able to understand how their, how their plan might be activated. And we also refer here at paragraph ninety nine of our written submission to the development of Guides for Understanding Supports, which is the means through which the agency is taking research evidence about the things that work in working towards particular common outcomes within the scheme and translating that evidence into easy to use formats so that participants can be better informed consumers in the market.
My last question, and the commissioners may have some questions for you. Yesterday, the Royal Commission heard from Commissioner McDougall, the Queensland Human Rights Commissioner. And we asked him some questions about the operation of the Queensland Human Rights Act. One of the issues for the Queensland Human Rights Act is the responsibility of public entities to act consistently with the Queensland Human Rights set out in the Act. And that a public entity can include a registered N D I S provider. And that a public entity can include a registered NDIS provider performing public acts. There seemed to be some uncertainty about exactly who would be caught by that description, whether it would cover all NDIS-registered providers or only NDIS-registered providers who are performing particular functions that are connected to public entities in Queensland. And this raised for us the question about the extent to which the NDI A has given consideration, the extent to which the Queensland Human Rights Act has any bearing on how you engage with service providers, registered service providers in Queensland and the extent to which the requirements in the Human Rights Act in Queensland have any bearing on any actions, policies or practices within the NDI A. So it's a peculiarly Queensland provision. I don't think I've seen in the material that we've reviewed any statement from the NDI A about the effect of the Queensland Act on NDI A-registered providers. So I'm just asking NDI A, not QSC, where it all goes when the complaints are on. But really at the beginning, which is the decision-making that service providers engage in on a day-by-day and sometimes, as we heard yesterday, minute-by-minute basis when they're supporting people with disability. Is that something the NDI A has turned its mind to at all? And I'll probably ask both of you on that.
I'm not aware of any specific consideration that the NDI A has given to the implications of the Queensland Human Rights Act in that regard. I think, however, again, the work we have undertaken in developing our position around supportive decision-making, which is very much informed by human rights legislation more generally and the UN CRPD specifically, does identify a role for the agency in supporting both participants, but also our staff and partners and others within the ecosystem, including providers, to have an understanding of supportive decision-making and how to enact that through their work, such that the dignity and autonomy of the participants they support is upheld. Specific to the Queensland Human Rights Act, I'm not aware unless, as you have.
No, no, that'd be a correct statement.
All right, well, Dr Bennett, I express my appreciation that this is the third time you've given evidence at the Royal Commission and we're very grateful for your assistance and support. Mr Lee, it's your first time, he will not be returning, but we're also grateful for your assistance today. The commissioners may have some questions.
Thank you, Miss Eastman.
Thank you both. I'll ask my colleagues if they have any question. Commissioner Ryan?
Thank you, Mr Chair. I think what we have in front of the commissioners, we've got to sort of work out, I may use the words of counsel assisting, how do we stop a Paul Barrett situation occurring again? And do you recall counsel assisting asking you a question about whether or not staff are encouraged to exercise common sense? Because I'm not really sure that you actually answered that question. For example, are there, is advice given to staff about recognising abuse? Because it appears one of your staff did, according to the report, recognise that an abuse situation might have been occurring. On page twenty-seven, if I might just read something there, it says, "A planner also recalled that she sought advice from her team leader in regard to Paul Barrett as the nominee not wanting to access any supports and was advised, presumably by the team leader, 'We can't force people to have supports, it's choice and control.' This story concerns a whole heap of sliding door moments where people might have recognised two young men were in serious trouble and no one noticed. Now, I don't know whether that's the case or not, but are people advised to look for signals of abuse? And if they feel there's abuse going on, are there procedures within the NDI A to report that somewhere?
Commissioner, thank you for the question. Yes, today there is. In response to that case and others, as you've heard today, the NDIs has put in place processes and procedures that we've mentioned here today. But things that we haven't mentioned would include since that time, the NDIS mandatory and essential training for planners and access officers has been fully reviewed and reset. So now the training programme for planners and access officers, which is slightly different, but again, the difference is they're specifically tailored now to the role as well as being much more comprehensive in training the planner or the access officer to look for and identify risks. As Mr Bennett mentioned, too, our operating guidance that supports the way our planners and access officers operate within the confines of the scheme have been reviewed since that time and substantially improved to provide planners with much clearer guidance around what to do when there may be risk signals that they detect and how to deal with that. So I'm fairly confident that that kind of situation would be far less likely, given the training and support that we provide to our staff today. Notwithstanding that, other things that we have in place now that we didn't have in place at that time are things like a community of practice framework that allows for our senior planners and for want of a better way to describe it, our junior planners to have time in their week, in their day to reflect upon changes to guidance that we are regularly reviewing and updating in understanding what that, those changes to guidance or changes to legislation perhaps mean in terms of their direct provision of service and support to participants in the day-to-day duties of their role.
So are NDIA officers able, a planner for example, able to, if they recognise something that causes them to be suspicious of abuse or neglect, what would they be able to do about it?
In a similar circumstance, one where a planner, a participant is flagged as being, having a potential risk factor that requires the NDI A either through planners or through its LAC or early childhood partners to reach out to the participant or the family. They would be more proactive in exploring what are the factors behind any issues that might be apparent through that regular checking process. I could say with much more, with confidence that today, if a planner did, was alerted through that process that there were potentially other concerns that they had and they escalated that to their immediate supervisor, that the response would be quite different in regard to considering more proactively whether that person who is acting as the nominee is an appropriate person to continue to hold that role relevant to the person with the disability and what to do about that, whether there is enough evidence to hand to make a referral, for example, to the public guardian on behalf of an adult or to make a referral to another agency that does have coercive powers to intervene, Child Protection Services or the police, perhaps.
That's what I was after, I mean, for example, you could be dealing with criminals.
Could be.
Are you able to report to the police or child protection? We think this particular person who's got protection of a child is neglecting them seriously. Are you able to do that?
Commissioner, yes, we do. The planners are, and staff generally are guided to do that if they have evidence or information to hand that would raise that level of concern. We do regularly contact police, for example, on behalf of vulnerable adults to request what we call welfare checks. So that, you know, we know they have powers to enter the home that the NDIS does not have. And we do make referrals quite regularly to the child protection agencies in various states and territories.
Commissioner, if I may very briefly add, we do keep such things under constant, we do keep such things under constant review. Most recently, one of the things we've done is publish a participant safeguarding policy, which we developed very closely in collaboration with the disability community that really seeks to clarify and provide further guidance to staff about all of these matters, both in terms of the developmental and preventative actions we can take through the planning process, but also the actions we can take where issues and incidents occur. I think we provided that to the commissioners in draft in February, but it was published back on tenth of April.
Well, I was going to ask, since you referred to training, could you provide perhaps on notice to the commission better details, particularly with regard to child protection matters? When they're recognised, how staff are taught to recognise, how they're instructed to escalate them, like I would find in other government agencies, to be honest, I think. Are you able to provide that to the commission so that we can be absolutely certain that if this ever happens again, that someone is going to pick up the phone and report it to someone that needs to hear about it?
Yes, Commissioner, we can.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr Jeff.
Commissioner Mason?
Following along with Commissioner Ryan's questions, do child representatives or nominees, do they have to sign anything similar to a declaration of criminal convictions when they begin the roles?
I don't believe so, Commissioner.
No, they need only to sign that they consent to being the nominee or the child representative and have read and understood the obligations associated with that role in our operational guidelines, which reflect the rules in each case.
So just going to Commissioner Ryan's point around a person that may have criminal convictions prior to becoming a child representative or a nominee, would that not be the opportunity to, I mean, it's not requesting something similar to an ochre card or a blue card to go through that process, but a declaration at that beginning process? Because I don't know, I'm not sure of the timing with with the father around the criminal conviction. It may have happened after, for example, a declaration is signed, but it would need to be updated if something did occur and that again would flag a concern.
Certainly something we could look at, Commissioner. It's not required under the current rules, but we could operationally implement such a declaration.
It would be consistent with working with children in those circumstances of being highly vulnerable as child protection workers, for example, have to sign for those records to be there. So we're employing and working with safe people and not to assume that a parent is a safe person. Thank you.
My one question to either or both of you. Do your guidelines, whether previously or now following the review, allow for access to independent individual advocacy as an option using the case study as an example?
Our guidelines certainly for planning tasks do refer to the community connections that we can encourage and create. And that would include to advocacy organisations. The NDI A typically doesn't fund individual advocacy, which goes right back to the original Productivity Commission design of the scheme, which was clear that the independence of such advocacy from any administering agency would be an important factor. And consequently, individual advocacy is funded nationally by the Department of Social Services. We have in the past, as an agency, funded self-advocacy and a range of other capacity building supports, whether that be peer supports or mentoring, primarily through utilisation of ILC grants, information linkages and capacity building grants to organisations to provide those supports. So we have linked people to those in the past. The agency doesn't currently manage the appropriation for ILC.
Thank you. I thank you, Dr Bennett and Mr Lee. We're very grateful for your contribution. I know that we've gone a bit over time, so thank you again.
Miss Eastman?
Thank you, Commissioner. So that concludes the witnesses and the evidence for today. As I mentioned yesterday in the opening, we've received some statements from Queensland. We now have five statements. So if we can resume tomorrow morning at nine AM, that should give us sufficient time to have the opportunity to examine the five deponents to those statements. And the commissioners, you'll have time this afternoon to thoroughly review and consider the five statements. Six now, is it? Six, six statements, right, there we go.
Thank you. Before we adjourn, I forgot to ask the party would leave to appear if you had any questions, sorry. Oh, well, Miss Eastman, if there are no any other matters, we will adjourn then until nine AM tomorrow.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The Royal Commission is now adjourned.